... United States, our good Father, who is our nation and the God of the world. Number one, please.
Page.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Planning Board meeting for May 23, 2024. I have no chairman's comments tonight. Item number two is SP—oh, I should not say that. I do have chairman's comments.
Pull it from the bass, because we can't hear you, so you should— Whoa.
Yeah, that one's bad. Yeah, something's wrong with that one. Yes. Karen Lawler, who was our administrator here, her mother has died, and I'd like to take more of silence to remember her at this point in time. Item number two, SP 21-009, 188 Cushion Street Landscaping Bond Released Request.
Yes, Chairman, I had a memo in there that the—I've—they requested—the one year is up. They requested the inspection. They're a landscaping company, and guess what? They maintain their landscaping. So I'm recommending that the board vote tonight to release their bond.
Everything in that site's done at this point in time? For what—the entire site work is done on that job at this point in time?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Is that the one?
Go ahead.
Is that the one that look real, real nice? And either side of it looks real, real bad?
That's the one.
That would be the one that looks real, real nice, and all their neighbors look real, real, real bad. Yes, sir.
I was very—like, I Googled it. I didn't go buy it.
Yeah.
But Googling it is like, very, very impressive, nice job.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that we release their bond.
Is that your motion?
That is the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set?
Okay. I will—I might have to have you—
Sign it.
Sign it, so.
That's fine. Item number three, Route 27 Zoning Study Project Final Presentation by the MAPC. You're up.
Great. Great.
Well, you've met Sukanya before—
Yes, we have.
So we're kind of done, and I will let her take over, and I'm gonna be doing the slides for her.
Great, thanks. Always great to be here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sukanya. So, yes, this is one of those final presentation to the planning board. Of course, still, we are in a mode of gathering feedback, so we hope that whatever we hear today, irrespective of how substantive or not substantive those changes might be, we'll be—I'll be taking notes, and we'll be reflecting that in the report for the town to sort of consider whenever these zoning changes actually get implemented. But I'm gonna go through some slides. The first—next, please. The agenda for today is that I'll really quickly go through the project overview just to explain where we are in the process. And then we have one survey that we did between the last presentation that I gave to you all and now that we have not reported on, and so I'll be sharing some feedback and outreach synthesis. And then we'll get into the meat of the presentation, which is—the—which are the recommendations. And then just a small note about next steps and what other things can be lined up after this project. Next slide, please. So really quickly, we are in the last stage of recommendations. We are done with the existing conditions analysis, the scenario development, of course, and community engagement that underpinned all of these steps, including connecting with all the stakeholders, and so now we—and in terms of timeline, next slide, please. We are in—
Just a quick question.
Uh-huh.
On the forums, I mean, how much of community engagement do you get in the forums? Do you get a fair amount of people?
Yeah, sure. I was gonna get into it, but we got a total of 71 survey responses between the first and the second two surveys. And in terms of the forums, we had two in-person and one hybrid forum, that is, folks could join online, and we had about 40 attendees in total combined. So we were grateful for all those who have continued to sort of provide us feedback and attend. So in terms of timeline, here we are towards the end. The only thing that'll remain after this is a report that we'll submit to the town, which will also be publicly available in the—on the project webpage, which will include, of course, all the information that I'll share today, detailed recommendations, and the appendix of each of—the four of each of the forums and the community surveys that we conducted. All of that information will be attached fully within that report so that folks know what comments we received and how we have incorporated that. Just to frame—next slide, please. Just to frame, this was the project timeline that I had shown, but in terms of like the bigger process, after—in June, we'll be submitting the report to the town, but then we expect this is a resource for the town to take as a menu of options for the zoning changes that could be done in the area. I also want to underpin that there are more—there's more context to this. There are parallel studies that'll probably be very beneficial around transportation and others that can actually help implement some of the recommendations that are there. And sort of those going hand in hand are critical for the success of the zoning and the vision that we have identified through community feedback. So there'll be a process for the town to sort of consider it through the report that we provide, and then there'll be additional public hearings before all of the changes go to warrant and town vote. But this is where the role of MAPC sort of will wrap up in June, where we'll be providing the report to also the funding sources who provided the funding for it. So, next slide, please. Just to sort of really quickly wrap up, I think I already mentioned, in terms of outreach, we conducted community surveys, we conducted interviews and meetings with few folks, as well as public forums. Two public forums, to be exact, and two surveys. As I mentioned, there were about 71 survey responses and 40 total attendees in the—in both forums combined. And then the interviews and meetings that we conducted and the findings we had from those were all shared with the planning board in the last meeting that we—we—last time I presented. But all that information is still—will be available in the report that we submit. Next slide, please. So today, since we have not talked about the survey—second survey that we conducted, I'm here to also share about what we heard from the second forum. We did not have a lot of attendee—a lot of respondents in the second forum. First forum had 57 response—a first survey had 57 responses, but the second survey that we conducted, which was open for a month—for one full month between March and April, we only had 14 responses. So all the—the findings that I present are based on those responses. So the first question in the survey was about goals and focus areas, and we found—so the question was, do the goals and the focus area that we identified during the second public forum about the recommendations sort of align with the vision of the—of the public and the respondents? And majority of the survey participants, about 63%, agreed and told us that the goals and focus areas do align with their vision. However, there were some open text comments, and we found polarized opinions on especially the increased density. We can get more—we—I'll get more—I'll explain more about the densities that we are proposing, not necessarily increased in some parts of the nodes, but in terms of the polarized opinions that we got, some people—while some people thought more development should be coming to both the nodes, while maintaining, of course, quality open space, some people thought the increased housing density would be detrimental to the community. And so in order to sort of incorporate this feedback, we took it as—the input that we had from taking all this feedback was to moderately increase densities and to moderately tweak the parking or the dimensional requirements, and only in moderation change the open space. So we are not proposing a big increase in density. And I'll go into details in the recommendations on that. Yeah, go ahead.
How do you calculate that density? Is it per square—square foot, per acre?
Yeah, so it's the housing density, which we call gross—gross density. It's dwelling units per acre. So we take the lot acreage and number of units on it, and that's so—for example, three dwelling units per acre is a housing density that we are sort of envisioning for the residential node that I'll talk about. So—
What would the footprint be of a unit? Did you say in 12 units per acre?
Per acre. I said three—three—I use the example of three dwelling units per acre.
That's just shy of 15,000 square foot lot size for a single family, three units to the acre.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I have a couple of visualizations which might be helpful to sort of visualize what I'm talking about. In terms of another questions that we got, more than 50% of the—so we asked a question about whether they have concerns about the proposed dimensional regulations, both for the two nodes that I'll be talking about, the commercial node as well as the residential node. And more than 50% people said that they did have concerns, and their concerns were mostly about the consequences of increased housing density, similar theme from the previous question. And some very valid reasons, like traffic, overburdening of school systems, and some expressed that such regulations are not enough to make development feasible. So there were sort of two sides of it. We took into account that, and as I mentioned, we are proposing moderate changes, or slightly—not extreme changes. In terms of clarity, we asked whether the strategies and recommendations were clear to people when we were talking about it in our second forum, and 50% said yes, and 25% mostly agreed. So majority mostly said that it was clear to them. And—but we did have an open text response option there, and I've given an example there, but we recognize that some action areas are especially around transportation. A lot of comments were about transportation, but this is a zoning study, which we will sort of highlight that there's a need for transportation studies, but our recommendations around zoning can only go so much. That said, in the report, we will clarify that sort of these changes, infrastructural as well as transportation, need to go hand in hand for the success of all the zoning changes that happen. We all—next slide, please. Oh, sorry, I—I've already talked about the dimension—
The clarity.
Yes, and the clarity as well. So, yeah. We also wanted to sort of see what visually—what visual preferences folks had for the two nodes. So the pictures we had shared with the—with them here were specifically for around mixed uses within the commercial node. This is near the RK Plaza. So we were asking which sort of development here looks more interesting and enticing than other, and folks chose the B and C the most—as the most preferred option. And as I go into the visualizations that I share, there should be more information—you should be able to see some of this preferences within our visualizations and the recommendation. Similarly, in the next slide, we have visual preference for Ash Street. Again, the heights are reduced, of course. Folks preferred the first visualization, A1, and we are using that as our basis when we're proposing some of those zoning changes, as well as visualizations that we'll be sharing. So this was sort of what our survey—second survey asked, and we have accounted for all the responses we got. And some of the key takeaways, next slide, please, from them that I'll just re-highlight would are some of the perceived issues in the study areas included presence of vacant properties and need for redevelopment, lack of sidewalks and bike infrastructure, and inconsistent landscape, and lack of conformity in developments. These are some of the perceived issue in the area. In terms of visions and goals, throughout this is including survey one, we heard a lot of keywords from open text comments such as pedestrian—need for pedestrian-friendly developments, mixture of housing and business, mixed-use development, housing with connections to recreational commercial areas, well-maintained local businesses, greenery, some of these keywords kept popping up in our comments. In terms of use regulations, we again heard a lot about—we heard senior housing quite a bit, market rate housing, commercial uses focused on retail and restaurants, mixed uses and others, including some recreational uses like Jim. So these were some of the sort of highlights of the feedback we got. And in terms of—next slide, please. In terms of overall sentiment, which is like a sentiment analysis that we do on language-based inputs that we get from surveys, we saw that folks wanted development of a more pedestrian-friendly and vibe—development that leads to vibrant community in this area. However, there isn't a perfect consensus on how to get there. Finding the middle ground between two extreme opinions on increased density in the area was hard, and housing can be a controversial issue, and especially people are concerned about its implications on schools and traffic, which are all points that are well taken. So based on all of this feedback that we got from second forum and, of course, from the first forum that we had gotten, next slide, please. We sort of—this is a slide just summarizing how we got to the recommendation. So we did the quant—just as a reminder, did the quantitative analysis through surveys, parcel analysis, we did some spatial mapping. I shared that last time with a lot of maps around environmental constraints, et cetera, as well as qualitative analysis, which included interviews. And using all of those, as well as case study discussion with, of course, the town planner, input from local experts, things like that, we were able to come to a few examples of what might work here, and those are in our zoning recommendations. So we have a guiding vision for each recommendation, a tool that might be able to realize that vision, and some other suggestions we have around design guidance that the town can consider. Next slide, please. Again, recognizing that the zone—these zoning recommendations are within the context of transportation, we have highlighted a few studies that we heard from the OCPC transportation team, who work a lot on—the—who have worked in this corridor quite a bit, and they suggested a bunch of studies that could be beneficial for the area, and those are listed and will be detailed in the report as things—as recommended studies that the town could pursue. And then, of course, public realm improvements. A big part of this study area is recognizing that it's a gateway from Brockton to Stoughton, and it currently does not feel like one. However, how can we use the developments that occur in the future to incentivize public benefits and public realm improvements or gateway enhancement through this, and including both zoning incentives, but others as well? So with that as context, I'm going to now dive into recommendations. If you go on the next slide, I just wanted to highlight some—the two nodes that—nodes that we are talking about. So primarily, all these recommendations or changes that we are proposing will be done on these two nodes. On one side, we have the RK Plaza node, as—which has, of course, RK Plaza and a part of the church parcel, which is under—the same zoning, as well as a few more parcels across it. You'll see there's one property which is right beside Chateau Restaurant, which is hatched, which was recently sold. We tried to reach—to reach out to the owner, but have not heard back, but potentially that area could be included within this node, but if they are not interested, we could take—keep this out. We'd like to basically learn more about what they feel about this recommendation, but at least the blue area is what—we are sort of considering as our commercial node. And on the other side, towards Ash Street or Seventh Street, that's the residential node that we are talking about, and we have recommendations separate for those, recognizing that these are two different kinds of areas and the nature differs, so zoning changes should reflect that and should not be applied throughout.
So these are the way—these are the areas we would change the zoning into from what is presently right now, and the only two areas we wouldn't be looking at that whole stretch?
Yeah, we are proposing—we have a bunch of recommendations to—which propose changes, but you'll see that we have tools that the town could—like, we are not proposing for them to be changed right now. Town could consider some of the changes that we have given, but these are the only two areas that we are focusing our recommendations on. That's right. And just for more—
Now, those are general business, I believe?
Yeah, if you go to the next slide, that's the underlying zoning. So for—the RK Plaza node, the underlying zoning include GB, which is in orange, and then there's Neighborhood Business District, which is RK Plaza and part of the church parcel is under Neighborhood Business. And then if we include that additional parcel by the Chateau, that would be in RA District. So those are the underlying zones for that node, and then for the residential node, there are two underlying zones, GB and RB.
That would be Ash Street, is—
That's the Ash Street one, yep.
So most—so most of that area on the west side of Park Street is basically residential, it's just all RA right now?
Yeah, that's right. So, next slide, please. We can begin with commercial nodes, so all the recommendations and information that I give from here are specifically for RK Plaza node or the commercial node.
One thing that we had a discussion, this hatched-in parcel, that's obviously—you know, it's—it's a large, potentially developable parcel. We wanted to not just blindly not look at it, but some of the more intense development that is being—or the densities and things that are being suggested under this potential, the RK Plaza node, would not be for this parcel. It's—that would be subject if—if and when Phase 2 sewer went in.
Yeah, because that end of it isn't sewer, but—
Correct, that end. Well, RK Plaza has sewer through—
Brockton.
Through Brockton. So—we—the—the study acknowledges that there's a potential developable piece of land there that, you know, should, you know, be considered at some point in the future under certain circumstances.
But that recently sold—
Correct, it did.
So they may have a plan for it—
Right, and we reached out to them, both—all of us, and had—and they did not reply to us, so.
So if whatever plan they have falls under the existing zoning as of now—
Correct.
And if that goes through, then we can't do anything with it after that?
Correct. We—we wanted to try to include them and say, "Do you want to look outside of the box? We're doing this zoning study." What are—what are some, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, they did not reply.
How far—do you know how far down that street the sewer comes? Does it come all the way to the edge of the blue area you've highlighted, or is it further closer?
No, it's really—it's only the—it's the—
It just goes into the RK Plaza.
It's just into the RK Plaza.
Yeah, because I know Burger King is on a septic system.
Correct. Everything on the other—everything on the other side of the street is on a septic system.
Oh, so sewer is—okay.
Right.
Right.
There's no chance of picking up anything.
Is—is Brockton interested in that area being tied into this system?
Um, we—
Not really.
No, I—I don't—I don't really believe so. I—I believe that there was a—I wasn't here, obviously, at the time, but I believe there was an intermunicipal agreement. The RK Plaza folks really were the drivers of getting it on sewer, so I'll digress. I'll let Sukanya finish.
Yeah, so in terms of the commercial node and RK Plaza node, this is—these are some of the goals and visions that we identified after recognizing all the feedback and technical analysis. So those include allowing for development of mixed uses, providing flexibility in regulations to encourage redevelopment of underutilized lots, encouraging pedestrian-friendly environments, and increasing walkability, activating street frontages, permitting a variety of compatible land uses to foster economic vitality and social well-being, and addressing the housing needs of the town, and facilitating compact, moderate-density development and reducing the amount of land required for surface parking. Additionally, alignment with recommendations from previous plans. We—in—a previous presentations, we highlight—presentation, we highlighted that we refer to the master plan, the housing production plan, the open space and recreation plan, and we have findings from that which will be highlighted in the report, but recommendations from that are also consistent with some of the work that we have done and the recommendations we have produced here, so that there's continuity in the development efforts from the town. Just one more thing I want to highlight, we're talking—if we don't consider the pending parcel, which is the hatch portion, we're looking at about 25—26 acres of land in that blue area that is highlighted. So, next slide, please. Here are some of our recommendations, and these are the categories of that—of those recommendations and what strategies we have identified. So you'll see that we have the use-related recommendations, we have recommendations around dimensional and parking standards, as well as some redevelopment potential that can be boosted through—the recommendations we have identified, and then some public realm-related recommendations. So in terms of use-related, you'll see that our strategies were—that we had identified during feedback as well, community outreach as well, was that allowing mixed use by right and senior housing by special permit was a priority, and encouraging environment—sorry, neighborhood-scale business types were in some—some of our priorities. So we recognize that this can be implemented in different ways. We identified two alternatives, which we have presented to—the—which the town will have, and will be able to take either of those, but the essence of what these tools will be are outlined in the report. First tool is to create a new mixed-use overlay district for this node. Of course, overlay districts are something that we can allow by right, some uses can be allowed by right, but the base zoning still stands. Another alternative is changing the underlying zoning and creating a new district called, say, NB2. We'll be leaving that to the town also because if—if this is a change, if underlying zoning is an option that the town decides to sort of have a change in, they could consider rest of the NB zones across the town and see if that change might also impact those, and if it might make sense to change it across town. So those are the two alternatives, but the essence of what these districts will look like, we—I'll go into detail as to what—what changes these districts will make. In terms of dimensional parking standards, as we had sort of noted, some of the prohibitive nature of these could impact the redevelopment potential, and it would be helpful and—it'll make developments financially viable if we tweak that and reduce some of those. So we have updated some of those and proposed some changes. In terms of redevelopment potential, we have also thought about design guidelines. Of course, this study did not scope in creating a design guideline document for the town, but we do have some suggestions that the town can take, so that the changes that happen in the—in—in these areas are aesthetically pleasing and are designed what—look like what the community wants. And then public realm improvements around gateway enhancements. So, next slide, please. Getting into the district that we are proposing, this could be an overlay again or a cha—a new district altogether. The purpose of it would be to increase mixed-use development, aim to encourage the integration of commercial and residential uses in some—in—in the same space, fostering vibrant developments and active street fronts. Administrative process or where we are hoping to change some of the use—uses are below. Of course, there's a detailed list of all the users and the big table that the zoning bylaw has, which will be included in our report, but some of the highlights from that is allowing mixed use by right. It's currently by special permit. Allowing flexible development regulations, which is a category in the bylaw, by special permit, which is currently no or not prohibited—or—currently prohibited or not allowed. Allowing multifamily senior housing by special permit, it's not allowed currently in that area. Allowing accessory uses such as family daycares by right within mixed-use developments, currently it's not allowed. And then for town garage, drive-through fast-food places, things like that, we are changing that to prohibited. Currently, it's by right. We—we think that that change can help create pedestrian-oriented developments and attract users that— and attract users that, that will actually serve the neighborhood instead of, um, a broader public. Um, another thing that we are calling out specifically in this district is, and in the zoning, is vertical and horizontal mixed use both, uh, and both are permitted and encouraged. Um, we wanted to sort of highlight this also because traditionally we think of mixed-use development as there is a, uh, ground-floor active, uh, commercial, and then there is houses, there are houses up top, uh, but it could also be just street-front, um, commercial storefronts, but then at the back of the lot, um, housing units in village-style clusters or detached townhouses, things that will still be in the same, uh, spirit as the neighborhoods, uh, the neighborhood is, it would not be a tall building, um, looking out of scale. Also, um, we, we think including a minimum percentage of use in a development would be helpful, specifically we are talking about balancing residential with the commercial components, um, and this tends to happen sometimes when you're not requiring minimum commercial in a development in a mixed use. You will get a very tiny, um, commercial component and rest of it is parking, and then there are residences. Developers are interested in making more res- residential units because that sort of makes the development more feasible, but, um, we think that requiring a minimum percentage, which in this case we are saying sixty percent, of commercial will ensure that, uh, active street frontage that we are hoping this development will have, and will bring vibrancy to the peda- pedestrian experience. Um, next slide please. For this particular area, uh, after looking at surrounding density, which is, uh, the map there is showing, the colors are showing, uh, density develop, uh, how, how dense the area is, um, the most of the orange or red, as you see, are the Brockton town line side, um, but we saw that in the imaged vicinity, the average density is nine-point-seven dwelling units per acre, uh, around RK Plaza node. It's mostly driven up by the apartments that they have on Brockton's side, 'cause those are about fifty dwelling units per acre, but, um, our proposal is to have a residential density, uh, within a mixed-use development to go up to a maximum, ma- maximum of eight dwelling units per acre, which is actually slightly lower than what the surrounding density is. Um, they are also highlighting compactness and clustering as an important part to make the, um, district more walkable and ma- uh, mixed-use areas more, um, pedestrian-friendly, and then af- as I mentioned, active street frontage. Um, I'm going, I'm going to also show some visualizations to show what that might look like, uh, but really quickly, also, next slide please, want to go through some of the dimension regulation changes that we are proposing. So in terms of minimum lot size, we are proposing it to be reduced to seven thousand five hundred from ten thousand, um, and increasing the maximum building coverage from fifty to sixty percent, a modest increase. Um, another thing we are proposing is, uh, increasing the height from thirty feet to forty feet, or three-point-five floors, whichever is lower, with cable roof. Um, in terms of front yard, you'll see we made a, uh, slightly larger change from fifteen feet to five feet. This is an effort to bring all the development closer to the street, um, which improves the experience for everyone on, um, uh, for, which improves the pedestrian experience and the vitality of the area. We're keeping the side yard and rear, uh, year, uh, rear yard, um, same, as well as the open space requirement same, so we're not tweak, tweaking that. Um, in terms of parking requirements, uh, we noted that existing requirements in, are quite high, uh, about three spaces per dwelling unit for single-family and two-family. Um, and in terms of multifamily developments, uh, for, for example, a three-bedroom, um, uh, there are three spe- um, three dwelling unit, uh, three parking spaces required for that dwelling unit, so it, we fe- we felt that tweaking these and reducing these can make developments more feasible. Um, so our proposal is for residential one-point-five spaces per dwelling unit, and if it's a senior housing, uh, if it's, uh, multifamily senior housing, uh, reducing that to point-seven-five spaces per dwelling unit. Uh, we also rec- sorry, uh, we also recognize that, um, this has a bus route, um, and has some public access, public transit access. Um, in terms of commercial use, we are keeping the parking requirements same as what it is currently, which is one per three-hundred square feet. However, we are, uh, and we have proposed, um, shared parking as a concept for this zoning, um, which is essentially residential, some of the residential spaces, in this case we are proposing thirty percent of the residential space parkings, uh, residential parking could be utilized by, um, commercial, um, commercial users, uh, based on the hours of operations and feasibility. Um, that said, uh, this will need a bit more, um, uh, there'll be a need for study of what the utilization rate is, and what is an agreeable time of operations and feasibility, for example, on Saturdays, um, so more thought might need, uh, might be needed, and, uh, given these will be subject to site plan review, uh, this might be helpful, uh, as a consideration, but we do think that sharing parking spaces can lead to overall less surface, need for less surface parking, um, that means more area for green areas, and more spaces for folks to walk around. Um, in terms, so, uh, as I mentioned, we have a few visualizations to help, uh, sort of understand this. Um, you're looking at a four-acre, um, lot there, the whole rectangle, um, and you're looking at a density of eight dwelling units per acre here, in this case, a vertical mixed use. So, um, the zoomed-in version, uh, the bottom shows, um, there are this proposed commercial at the bottom, and then residences up top, so this is a vertical mixed use that we are , uh, highlighting. Um, in terms of floors, you're looking at three-point-five floors, which is what the dimension requirements allow. In terms of front yard, um, that, all of the setbacks, et cetera, are based on what we had proposed in our dimension requirements. So this is an example of the vertical mixed use within RK Plaza node. Um, the next, uh, actually, a few things that I can highlight here, the development is closer to the street, um, next slide please. Um, the development is closer to the street, uh, there's parking in the rear instead of front, which is common, uh, this makes, again, the, the experience of that space changes fully because the parking is at the back. Um, the public realm improvements that can happen from this could be highlighted, like there could be more landscaping, the developer could support that. Um, and then in terms of, um, the, some of the choices that we had seen preferred by pa- uh, by, by our survey respondents, those sort of match some of this vertical mixed use. Uh, next slide shows horizontal mixed use. So this is storefronts on the front of the street, and then houses are at the back with parking in the middle, uh, if you have a lot that's deep enough. Uh, again, you're looking, uh, in term, in this case, the dwelling unit density is, um, eight, eight dwelling units per acre, the density that we are proposing, and the parking and everything is reflected based on what we have proposed. Um, next slide shows another example, um, uh, similar density, uh, just different, um, style, uh, a little bit less commercial use, um, more, uh, townhouse-style village cluster homes. Um, so this is all I had for RK Plaza. Uh, I know that's a lot, so I'm happy to pause here before we get into, um, Ash Street or the residential node recommendations.
I know we concentrated, you, you concentrated on RK Plaza, and there's an area across the street, but changing RK Plaza to a mixed use would basically take apart the plaza that's there. Are we, are we concerned that the owner of the present plaza isn't going to be able to continue with what they're doing, or that we're trying to create future development? What are, what are we trying to do with RK Plaza, I guess?
Great question. So, um, we think an overlay, if the town goes with an overlay, would basically allow everything that is currently there. Uh, nothing is being, irrespective of what zoning change happens, nothing which is on ground today will become illegal, or in, or non-conforming, I guess, is the better word.
No, no, I understand that, I understand what the overlay does, but I guess my question is, what do we gain, what does the town gaining by making the change? Is it the area across the street, and if we don't have sewer, what do we get? We can't put this type of density without sewer.
Absolutely, uh, and we did recognize that context, that if phase-two sewer goes through, the expansion that is something that the town has identified, this, these become more feasible. I do think there are, as you mentioned, across the seat, a few, street, a few lots that are underutilized, or have users that might, um, the developer might see a better use of it, and might see this, uh, these changes, like mixed-use development being more, um, feasible for them, better profit.
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering whether we're putting the cart before the horse at this particular end of it, without having a sewer placed.
This one is more, and, and we've had that conversation, and, and this one is more of a longer-term looking at, you know, 'cause every shopping center has an, you know, amateurizes out at a certain point, um, if, um, you know, some anchor tenants leave, and, and they struggle, and they get in, you know, the, instead of having their A tenants, they struggle and they get those B and C ten- C tenants in there. Um, this would be a tool for us to look at, uh, at that time, to say, okay, well, we did a study, you have sewer, we could look at doing an overlay district that would allow you to reutilize these buildings and, and allow these things. So I think that's, that's what, kind of where we are with that one.
So, yeah, we're not looking.
The Ash Street node is clearly, you have vacant property, uh, which we'll get to, and then you have several, uh, on the other opposite side, uh, you have that.
No, I, I understand, I just, I was trying to concentrate.
That's the context of this one is really, is kind of more of a long-range, we kind of keep this in our toolbox to maybe refine it, and as circumstances change in the future, we can look at, you know, possibly implementing this. Uh, if we do get sewer and the property across the street, that larger parcel does not, um, doesn't develop under the RA, RB zone, as, as Paul mentioned, then, then that's a blank slate and a great opportunity, but we've laid the groundwork for it and said, okay, well, if we get sewer here, um, we can work on this type of zoning, and, and, and this type of development is what we'd love to see there.
But this wouldn't be something that could go to town meeting for a vote, because you don't have the sewer to implement any of this.
Correct, correct, this is more of a long one.
In a file.
So, however.
In case.
The Ash Street node, and mind you, the, we, unlike the, uh, Campanelli study, which provided specific zoning, this is more of a planning study, and, and outlays it, I would either have to, you know, either do a, a separate contract and say, okay, let's, you know, after we do this and we say, okay, let's, let's really drill down on, and this is the conversation we have at the end, but you may say, you know, let's drill down on this, that Ash Street node versus this one, 'cause this one is a long-range one, but, and say, okay, let's, now, let's create some zoning and, and, and work on that, and these are the implementing guidelines that we're looking at, how we would look at doing that. So, you wanna, we can just continue.
Okay, uh, great, so, next we go into the Ash Street node or the residential node. Um, some of, similarly, as I men- presented for the commercial node, some of the visions and goals for this node were to leverage, uh, infrastructural upgrades, as said, there is sewer there, um, and to sti- stimulate some of the redevelopment of underutilized lots, we know there are some vacant storefronts, et cetera, uh, expanding housing options, including senior housing, something we heard from the community feedback, um, and also promoting mixed-use development to ensure there's feasibility. Encouraging and permitting variety of com- compatible land uses, uh, to foster economic vitality and social well-being, and amending dimensional requen- uh, requirements to improve conformity. Um, so, uh, next slide please. In terms of the strategies and recommendations we had here were, uh, for the use-related, expanding some housing options, and encouraging redevelopment of underutilized vacant lots through creating a mixed-use overlay district. For, uh, dimensional and parking standards, I'll get into more details, but we have sort of updated and reduced some of the requirements to make it more feasible. Um, in terms of incentives and design guidelines, again, for redevelopment potential in public realm, they're very similar to what we presented for commercial node, uh, but I'll of course, um, share all the details in the following slides. So, next slide, uh, talks about the overlay that we want to sort of, um, uh, imagine in this area. Uh, the purpose of the overlay would be to promote redevelopment of underutilized commercial and residential properties at low to moderate densities, while allowing flexibility for increased mixed-use housing options, uh, including two-family and multifamily senior housing and mixed-use developments. So in terms of administrative process and what is changing by right versus special permit, here are the things, or here are the highlights. Um, allowing two-family dwelling units by right, currently it's not, uh, it currently it's prohibited. Um, allowing multifamily by special permit, currently it's prohibited. Uh, flexible development regulations by special permit, currently it's prohibited. Um, mixed use by special permit, currently it's prohibited in RA and RB, and, um, it's by special permit in GB, so a portion of that node actually allows it by special permit, but we are saying it should be throughout. Um, multifamily senior housing by right, currently it's, um, by special permit, or not allowed, uh, and then some accessory uses, like family daycares, et cetera, um, by right. So in terms of density, um, you'll see on the right, the map, as well as the table sort of highlights, that the existing density in the imaged area is two-point-nine dwelling units per acre. Um, and so our density recommendation for it is, uh, for this, uh, node is three dwelling units per acre, with, uh, a potential density bonus of going up to one more dwelling unit per acre, so a total of four dwelling units per acre, if the developer provides gateway improvement and public benefits. Um, so that's sort of the density, I'll, I'll, of course, um, we have a visual to share, uh, as to what that density looks like in a lot. Um, next slide please.
Sakanya, I did want to highlight on this, some of these requirements, and we discussed, and it's later on, it'll be later on in the text, flexible development is like a me- minimum of ten acres. Uh, part of the requirement is to really take a look at the flexible development section and reduce the acreage, uh, to, you know, five, or actually two-and-a-half acres.
That should be done town-wide, like this.
Correct, and, and, and the other thing, when it talks about senior development, is also in the report, is, is that to allow, currently senior, um, senior housing is only allowed by the housing authority, and it should be allowed by a private developer. So, so, and, so those are recommendations that, uh, are, are recommendations that we should look at, um.
We should actually make specific changes to those.
And, and, and those are, those are, we could look at doing that, you know, flexible development's allowed in, in a lot of different zones, but really taking a look at that flexible development and reducing the acreage, because essentially flexible development is what in a planning term, I, as I call, uh, plan-unit development. It's, it's basically a special permit, it has a whole host of things, and it says, you know, come in and, you know, protect setbacks and those sorts of things, and, and be a little more creative on a piece of property that's two-and-a-half or five acres versus. So, I, I did want to highlight, when they say that, you know, because our flexible development currently is ten acres, well, all of this is less than ten acres, so that's later on in the report, but I did want to highlight, so those are, those are some key takeaways, which, as Mr. Chairman, as you said, we should look at town-wide.
Didn't they, years ago, restrict, like, put it up to two-and-a-half acres, so they could restrict the growth of a town? And so now what we're actually doing is reversing that.
Um, we're looking at reversing it in areas that have sewer, um, but yes.
But, right, but as a general statement.
They did take zoning, and, and that was at the time, and they made it one acre and two-acre zoning, sixty thousand square feet, fifty thousand, eighty thousand square feet, you know, so you're looking at, so, which.
Yeah, that's what the suburbs are supposed to be.
Right.
Well, not, well.
Yeah, that's, that's why people moved out to suburbs, because they did have room, they didn't have houses, I mean.
Well, but, I, I will, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully disagree, because most of the housing here was done prior to any of these zoning changes, and if you look in the circle, the average density is two-point-nine units, three units to the acre. And if you look in the circle, the average density is 2.9 units, three units to the acre. And I would say that.
I think minimum lot size is much more than that.
I know where most of you guys live and I would say, look at the lot size you have in your neighborhoods and they are not one acre and two acre lots. And those were built, you know.
The eighties.
More people wanting to live in the suburbs.
Right. And what happened was the lot size around my neighborhood, in Archie, downtown Pike Street, whatever, is typically around 15,000 square feet.
Which is.
A third of an acre.
Three units, uh, uh, an acre is 43,500, 43,560. So 45,000, you know, you're, you're just, you're 2.8 acre.
Correct. But the, the point being is, once the saturation point hit, that's when the towns increased it to one acre, two acres, because they wanted to slow the growth down because everybody was moving out of the city.
Right.
So that was.
That's, that's a discuss, that's a discussion.
Where I am in particular, I have three quarters of an acre. So now, to me, something should have but me that's similar to that, not one-third the requirement. You know what I'm saying?
I figure it's just not to do, you know, what you see is open space, so to speak, here. Now what happens is now you want to see if you can get some more development in there.
We're looking at, we're looking at several things. One is there's some vacant property, vacant properties, there's underutilized properties, an overlay district, so the underlying zoning still stays. And if you go through special permit and certain things to provide setbacks and screenings and different things, you could potentially take advantage of this. That's, that's kind of.
Right. And again, if you look at the downtown, how that zoning has changed over the past 15 years, it's made some radical changes. But again, it has sewerage there.
And that's why this project, that's why we did this study, because this all has sewer. All of this has sewer.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons we commissioned some of this, because this has sewer. The other stuff is in phase two, which is long-term. But this all has sewer.
From 10th Street down to the Broxton line doesn't.
Yeah.
Right, but specifically talking was just.
We're talking, we're, Peter, we're talking about this node.
No, no, I get that, but I'm just saying is.
Right. The other one doesn't.
The overall picture, you compare one to, like, you talked about the Arcade Plaza.
Right.
And when Broxton granted them the tie-in, it was most likely due to the buildings that were there.
Right.
So if you change anything there.
And, and as I said, don't get hung up on that one. That one is really a long-term, long vision. This is more of a, this is more of these, this node has sewer and these are some things that could be, you know, higher and better uses to take advantage of the sewer, yet still blend into the neighborhood. So that's why we're not proposing eight units to the acre. We, we've recommended, they've recommended the same density of what the area is now.
Okay.
So I'll let her finish.
Right.
And, and actually, this is a good segue into the next slide. So currently in terms of the minimum lot size, um, the existing lot size for this area is 55,000 square feet for, for majority of this node. Uh, we are proposing reducing that to 15,000 square feet. What this will also do is that currently, actually, across the study area, 90, more than 90% of the residential parcels are non-conforming to the existing zoning. Um, but this proposal, this change will bring all of those residential parcels into conformance. Um, specifically in this node at least. So 15,000 square feet, um, from 55,000 square feet minimum lot size, 15,000 is actually, as I think Peter mentioned, um, median, um, size of lots in this area anyway. Uh, we are proposing a slight increase in the building coverage from 20 to 30%. Um, in terms of height, uh, same height, uh, we're not proposing any change, so keeping it to 2.5 floors. Um, changing the front yard requirements from 40 feet to 10. Um, uh, and also if there is a garage structure, then changing that to 25 feet. Um, but basically bringing slightly closer to the street. Um, the side, side yard remains same, say, same as rear yard and same as the open space requirement. So, um, also in terms of parking requirements, as I had mentioned, the existing requirements are quite high. For this area, we are proposing residential parking requirements of two spaces per dwelling unit. Uh, and for senior housing, one space per dwelling unit. And similar commercial uses, um, uh, proposal, as I had mentioned earlier, if there are any mixed use developments or, or commercial developments that happen. Uh, we are also encouraging parking in the back, um, of the development instead of front. Um, so next slide visualizes this density. You're again looking at a four-acre lot. Um, this, uh, this density that you see is three dwelling units per acre. These are detached townhouse, townhouses that you're seeing along the street. Um, so they're, these are two-family, each, each sort of building has two families in it. Um, and we are looking at 2.5 floors, um, of height. So this is what that density looks like. Um, just for reference, next slide has what single-family homes would look like in this, uh, in a four-acre lot, three dwelling units per acre would look like this with single-family homes. And this is just for illustrative purposes, uh, what this might look like. We are proposing what was in the previous slide of having detached townhouse-style homes so that things are more clustered and compact. You have more space, open space, as well as more screening, uh, and buffers for, for minimizing impact on neighbors. Um, so if we go to the next slide, um, here are some of the things that I had, I was mentioning that the zoning can highlight within this district, including talking about, and these are some of the design guidelines suggestions, but this could be also included in the district. This is around architectural style, encouraging townhouse-style residential developments, um, compactus and clustering that I mentioned earlier, making walkable residences or residential or mixed uses development that come. Uh, site design and landscaping, again, some key site design elements such as landscaping, screening and buffering to enhance the visual appeal of developments can be prioritized to mitigate impacts on adjacent properties. And then also having environmental and sustainability standards. So those were all the recommendations for residential node. Um, and this is my last slide, so I'll go through it and then we can talk about the residential node as well. Um, just in terms of next steps, I'll be taking all the feedback that I get today into, um, the report. That will be included in the report for the town to look at whenever the town, whenever the town pursues this work and takes it forward. Um, we will also, that report will be available in June for everyone, including public, um, to look at on the webpage. And depending on, again, re-highlighting, depending on various factors, including infrastructural upgrades such as sewer to, uh, phase two expansion, transportation improvements, et cetera. Um, these recommendations that we have provided in terms of the zoning recommendations can guide those considerations and, um, then those zoning considerations can be taken to public hearing and then town board. So there's more public process that is, um, that will of course be included so that these zoning changes get implemented. But we hope that this work that we have done and this report that will be produced will be helpful for the town to make those considerations and, um, yeah, make those changes. But, um, that's all I had for you all today and just want to say thank you for everyone who has continually, um, provided feedback and attended all the meetings. Really appreciate all the support and this was a very, um, fulfilling project for me. I, I really enjoyed it. Um, and coming to Stoughton is always fun. So, um, thank you all.
I'm glad you left you with us, Cole.
The first meeting was tough, but the first meeting of Campanelli we had was tough, but then we, we, we kind of gained it.
I'm glad how it evolved from there to where I am here. So I'm, I'm, I found, and I've been coming here for about eight months now, so I'm, I'm happy and.
Getting used to it.
Yeah.
You learn how to bring football equipment to these meetings. I have a, a question. I noticed that you referred to three and a half floors. Now, the half floor, is that the, if you call the basement being four feet underground, does that actually make it four floors? I've been at which side.
When you're talking about stories, you have to refer to the building code. The building code refers to elevations, height where the grade goes. So you can't just.
It's the average grade.
Average grade around the building and then it goes up from the height from that point. There's actually a very specific definition of the building code for it.
Okay, so the four feet below is actually.
You can't say that.
No.
You have to work off the average grade around the building and then go 35 feet up.
Okay.
Or 25.
No, no.
The half stories are really like gables and dormers.
Like the small pitches that people have.
Oh, okay, all right.
Your height.
Where you have the peak and then you have like.
What they did is they recommended 35 feet to the top of the floor. So depending if you have a two-inch pitch or a nine-inch pitch in your roof, it's going to depend on the actual height.
Right, okay. Because like, if you were to go and have a basement, so to speak, you could.
Basement is not included in height.
Okay, so I mean, they could have utilities down there or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, basement is not included in height.
That's my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
Anything that we need to do goes first.
Nope, we're gonna, um, I'll, we're gonna put the, she'll put the presentation up on the web, on her website, which is linked, and then, um, she will finalize the report. Um, it has to be done because our grant for this runs out on 6/31, so.
You're under the gun.
Yes. But I think we're in a good position to.
State, federal grant?
State.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did the town contribute to any of that grant?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So how much is left in the funding?
The whole grant will be used.
Yes.
Uh, their final invoice will be, um, will, will be the, the contract amount. So there's, will be nothing left, um, in funding. But we, but the funding for this, uh, several, well, a fair amount of it was, uh, in funds that were, because in my planning budget, I have a contractual services budget.
Right.
And we encumbered, uh, from 2023 and 2024 funds, uh, out of this year's budget and last year's budget, because we had the contract last year.
Okay.
So there's, there, there's nothing left.
You spent it all.
For this. Yes, not all of the contractual services budget.
Okay.
So, and, and this year's, you know, I can just say, this year's, um, I don't know. I think it was 16,000 was taken out of this year's budget to finish the contract. So I had whatever, out of 50,000. We have, uh, and I've mentioned that I'm looking at having the subdivision worked on, the subdivision regulations, the subdivision, um, um, Dan, help me, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. The, um, details, the, all the, all the engineering details that are with it. Um, uh, so I have a contract right now, uh, for that and we're going to be working on that and then bringing that to the board. And then I had, um, also signed, we signed a contract for, and I told you to look at, um, we're going to be looking at the use table and the parking requirements. Uh, so I've got money that's been encumbered. And, and the reason why I did the use table is this because if you look at our use table and you look at the uses that we have in town.
Yeah.
You know, they're not listed. And the building commissioner has legal opinions and uses are handwritten in his zoning bylaw, which are also handwritten now in my zoning bylaw. Oh, gyms and daycares are considered personal service. This, and, and so there's no, to be honest with you, we shouldn't be.
Handwriting.
We shouldn't be using legal opinions and past practice and handwritten, you know, oh, well, it was determined that these uses were under this and this and they're all handwritten. It's, so we want to, we want to take a comprehensive look at our uses and our parking requirements.
So you want to get away from the slate tablets and the chisels?
Correct. I, I do. And, um, so, um, so those are the two projects that will, um, that I've signed contracts with that we're going to be working on through the summer and the fall.
I didn't mean to tie you up.
It didn't mean.
That's what you find.
So those are, so that, um, so that, that's under this current budget year.
Right.
We've got those contracts. We'll encumber the money because it won't be spent by the end of June. But it'll be, hopefully will be, so throughout the summer and the, the fall, the fall is when we're really going to be getting in, you know, when I get more concrete things to start bringing to you for. And I want to schedule, I don't want to schedule a normal meeting. I want to schedule what I consider a work session.
Okay.
Where we, we sit down, it's a public meeting and, and we just kind of go over, you know, all of these things. Because we're gonna, the use table, if you think about it, it's going to be, it's tough because it's long and it's wise and no, wise and special permits and, and, but we have to comprehensively look at every, you know, okay, well, a gym, should it be here, here, here? And while we're doing it, we can look at uses that we have in our code now and we could say, you know, we shouldn't, why do, why does that, that business is not appropriate in that zone? And we can change that.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, that's what we're going to look at doing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number four, general business, meeting minutes, we don't have anything at this point.
But I have a correspondence.
With the building commissioner, which I did read that. Has everybody read that?
Yeah, yes.
Um, before I make any comments, does anybody else have any comments on it?
I'm not exactly sure what's going on here.
Well, there was a proposal a while ago that was actually trying to go before zoning to make ADUs by right throughout the town, I think, or at least in certain residential areas. It was something, um, John Stagnoni was trying to put through a while ago.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And we didn't, we, I don't, we didn't bring it to the board.
We didn't go through with it. This seems to be something along the same lines, only he's asking for it to be a special permit. I think John Stagnoni wanted to be as of right.
Right.
So now, what, what Jack's trying to do is give us an avenue or give people in town an avenue to be able to do these ADUs. Is that what it is?
Yeah, and I, I had a long discussion with Jack about it and, you know, um, from a planning standpoint, the accessory dwelling unit, mother-in-law apartment, whatever you want to call it, it's the same thing. Um, you know, some people think that if you pass these bylaws, that everybody's going to put them in. And, well, not really. It doesn't, you know, um, what Jack is seeing is people are.
Putting them in anyway.
Creating these things illegally. We're having to have them taken out. We're having zoning, you know, code enforcement issues, uh, illegal apartments, uh, you know, in basements with no, you know, no proper egress and, uh, and it's, and it's a. He's really looking at it as this is a public safety issue. This is not appropriate in, in every case, but there are accessory dwelling unit or ADU bylaws and we could, you know, he's just made some recommendations to look at, at, at taking a look at them. There's a lot of different models out there, um, not making them as of right, making them, you know, if you look at, and just a handful of things, you know, you make them a special permit so they're not permitted as of right. There, there are discretionary action you can deny, um, that you have to have off-street parking for these things. If you can't, you know, you can set up criteria. You only have one meter. You can't have two meters. Um, you know, there's all sorts of things. He wants to know, um, is this something that the board, you know, is flat out against? You know, or is with certain restrictions and guidelines, you know, this would be a tool for him and it would be able to create some housing, but it would also help with a public safety issue that he's seen as a public safety issue.
I, I see a need for it. I've heard of people that have rented.
I've heard of people that have rented a house and put a petition down the middle of it and added bedrooms and sublet those out without the owner of the property knowing what was going on.
Oh, yeah.
Horror stories like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, definitely. And I would say by perm, by special permit as well.
Oh, yeah, I, I, we definitely think, but I don't want to get in the details of what it can do, but you, you can look at adding all sorts of restrictions that, you know, it, the residential character and, and it could be attached or detached, parking, meters, you name it. There's all sorts of things that you can look at doing.
I see this as an issue for the fact that, I know of a few different locations. Again, people spend five, six-hundred, six-hundred thousand dollars for a house. So what they do is they stop renting out the rooms. And again, they don't have enough parking, and parking is all over the place. You know, you also have Airbnbs that are kind of sliding in here and there. Do we have any regulations for that?
No.
So I mean, we, as a town, have to catch up with the times.
So are there surrounding towns that have this ADU already set up?
Some do.
Easton does. Easton does?
Yeah.
Some of the towns, I mean, there was, like I said, there was recommendation by one of the town citizens to put this through, and they were trying to actually go to town meeting with it this past spring, but they couldn't get the, the support behind it. And part of the reason is they wanted it to be as of right, so we could do these ADUs. Anybody could come in and put them in as of right. And I didn't think, because of a lot of reasons, what you guys have said, I've got a, you know, my house sits on three-quarters of an acre and I don't want two-family houses beside me. Because essentially, that's what you were, then to be able to create two-family houses perpetually. This, if we do it in this fashion, I think we'd be able to have a more of a regulation zoning. It wouldn't be just we're taking every zone in the town and saying we could put a two-family house there. So along those lines, I don't think, I don't have much of an issue with it. It's the as-of-right thing that I think basically throws our zoning book out the window if we're just going to say we can put ADUs as of right.
Okay, you know, and I'm, I'm hesitant, you know, I tried this where I worked before and, you know, the planning board was really resistant to it and I tried it several different times. So I have some drafts of things. It's interesting that the building commissioner, he's like, there's plenty of examples and he would like to work on it. I hear from four out of the five of you that, you know, if we looked at it, but we looked at really regulating it, to work on a, on a bylaw that we might be able to, you know, look at for the annual town meeting next year.
Yeah, and there's a big difference between an addition onto a structure as a separate structure too. Because with a separate structure, you can get much closer to all the setback requirements.
Well, they're doing that, I feel, which.
And if I did one, I would write it, I would allow for, you know, conversion. I would recommend you could allow for conversion, you could allow for an addition, provided it meets setbacks. Or if there's an existing garage.
Yes.
Or a thing to, but also, you know, they, they're limited on square footage. These are all the things, limiting square footage, I mean, it's, it's, it's having definite standards.
They went and, I figure Chandler did, they did a news story on that, that people are taking their garages, the twenty-by-twenty garage, and converting those into apartments. And it's like.
Well, and, you know, I will let you know that some of this is, some of, you know, some of it's, some of these, it's, some of it's aging in place. I know of circumstances where, you know, that the, the person created the small accessory dwelling unit, you know, she's now a widow, she lives in that, and then she rents, you know, the, the house out, because, and guess what? She can still stay in her neighborhood and extended staying in her neighborhood until she had to go into an assisted living, you know. It, it's, so there's two sides to this too.
No, no, my aunt lived in a small little unit on the back of the property. And it was built in the fifties.
Yeah.
Or sixties, and her son lived in the front house. And it was, was a good working relationship between the two of them.
Right, so.
There's a building on Union Street you must be familiar with. It looks like they put a, the addition for the in-law is three times the size as the original house.
Yeah, and we would, any bylaw I would have would limit square footage and those sorts of things.
Because that was recently built, that's only like four or five years old.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but.
Does the town of Stoughton have laws for in-law? They, we do, and what they allow is they allow you have an in-law only when it's family members. And if the family member moves out, you must decommission or.
You have to take the kitchen out and all of this.
All that type of stuff.
And it's not realistic. I mean, we, we have a law that, and, and, you know, and, and it's hard to regulate. So I, I know, you know, it's hard enough to regulate when I'm the planner and I have only a handful of these special permits and whatnot, to make sure that all the conditions are met, you know.
You know, that would probably come under the assessor's office too. They'd have to re-inspect those properties from time to time.
Oh, yeah.
And have, you pay a higher tax rate for that. And then if you're, you're going to decommission it, prove you decommissioned it, and your rate comes down.
So, but I'm, I'm happy, we will, I'll talk to Jack and we'll work on it over and look at, hopefully bringing something in the fall for you guys to look at.
We'd also like to know what, like you said, the town of Easton has, this like, what, what issues they are finding as problems with this.
The pros and cons.
Yeah, I, we can talk to the folks. There's perceived issues, the perceived issues are really not real, most, most I find generally. But that's what we can look at. So that's good, we will, we will look at working on that and I'm glad.
Somebody knows you're on the planning board.
Huh?
I have people come up to me now, because I'm on the planning board, and accuse me of different things that, you know, the whole issue about, you know, the people that are into the school thing, you know, like there's just too many kids in the school and.
We have a.
You know.
Yeah.
You put an apartment building up, it's your fault that our school.
And they, and they have almost no kids because they're one- and two-bedroom units. There's almost no children.
All right, any other business?
Celtics or I'm.
No, our next meeting, we have nothing for the June, whatever.
Bill, can I ask you one question?
You can ask.
That, that Swan's Tavern with the churches there.
Yeah.
They put their sign up.
The what?
They put their sign up and the landscaping that they did around there is, is quite horrendous.
Which project?
Turnpike and Central.
It's the church.
Oh.
The old Swan's.
They, they didn't, they didn't install the landscaping that, I need to contact them.
They're still parking out in front of that.
I know, I need, they.
They still have a.
There's a language issue there, I need to go and talk to the minister and say, you, you, they need to pick their decision up and record it too, they haven't done that either. So I, I have to go talk to them.
They get the sign in though.
Yeah, but they, this.
They figured out how they do that.
I, I know, I know, well, the sign company is the one that did things.
Then they, then they back up to the, they're going to hit the gas meter. Because they pull up on the, they back into the.
The landscaping hasn't grown in yet.
So, I know, and, and you guys see it all the time. I, I will work on trying to contact the minister and get one of the parishioners that actually can speak English and Spanish and, and work on that one.
Getting back to the meeting, I think you said it was the thirteenth of.
The thirteenth, we definitely have a meeting.
Okay.
But right now, we have nothing, we have, we'd have nothing on the twenty-seventh. So I'm letting you know that right now. So we do have something for the thirteenth of June. And then we also, I believe, have, we have something for July eleventh.
And that's our only meeting in July.
Correct.
One in July, one in August.
Right, and I believe, Mr. Murphy, you're not going to be here, but you can be online.
For the July?
The July eleventh.
Yes. Now, in speaking of June twenty-seventh, seeing that you don't have anything, that's actually a good, the beginning of, for the July fourth week.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice if nothing.
There's nothing on it, we have nothing.
Okay, so I'm going to just take that off my plate.
Yeah, we have, an application would have had to have been submitted, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So we have nothing for the twenty-seventh.
So it's going to be one in June, that's it?
One in June, one in July.
If I don't get back on the board, I won't be here for the July eleventh.
No, you'll be appointed, I hope.
Then you're on for five years.
You think you're going to get away that easy?
And we haven't set an August date yet, right?
No, we have not. What, you know, I know August, what, August eighth and twenty-second are the potential dates. I would like to talk about that in July. I think we would have a better handle on the August date coming July. I believe the July eleventh, I have a, we had a pre-app today with Costco, the gas station, and they're going to most likely submit in another ten, another week and a half. So they're going to make, the first hearing will be their July eleventh hearing.
They're in Stoughton, that's where Avon.
They're, they're property line splits.
The, the gas station.
Went through the property line.
The gas station proper portion is, is all within Stoughton. A lot of the access and the parking is within Avon. A portion of the building is in Stoughton.
Okay.
A portion of the building is in, most of it is in Avon.
Okay, I do recall that, because when IKEA came to town, technically, IKEA could not get into their property unless they had that cut-through road, they would have to go through Avon to get to their land.
Yeah.
But.
So, so that's kind of where we are looking at for the thing. Not a lot of projects right now, so the summer schedule will be good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.